Item number three is the invocation. For that, our friend Pastor Dennis Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity and privilege to join with you all this evening. Look forward to going together in prayer, so let's do that. Our gracious Father, we come today to thank you for the beautiful day. Lord, we thank you for the temperatures being a little cooler. We thank you for the rain that we got over the weekend. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you pour out upon each and every one of us. The fact that we're alive is a blessing. We want to say we're grateful. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and to do business that matters, business that affects all of our lives, that draws us together or sometimes divides us. The Father, it is your business. So we ask for unity. We ask for reason. We ask for wisdom, that the business that is accomplished would bring glory to you because it pulls us together and accomplishes your purpose. I especially ask that you would bless this group, the city's officials, all these that are involved in leading this city, that we would continue to move forward in a positive way. We pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Bless you.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate that. All right, item number three is audience participation. That's covered on the screen. If you wish to speak on an item, please contact City Secretary and fill out one of these forms, which other people have. You're allowed to speak on any item that is on the agenda. We will gladly give you opportunity to speak. Moving forward, item number four is a consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of August 4th. B is action regarding geotechnical services agreement with CMJ Engineering. C is action regarding resolution 2020-19 adopting TCAP's professional service agreement and Jackson Energy's commercial electric service agreement. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a mention that we accept the consent agreement?
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening. We have a full house. Thank you all for coming out. Moving forward, item number five, consideration action regarding a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance 2001-04, amending the regulations for private card club and bingo halls. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of months ago, excuse me, I received a phone call from a gentleman that was interested in opening a private card club in Saginaw. He had a space that he was looking at. He provided some information and some direction for me to do a little research. Apparently, private card clubs are a new thing in Texas. There've been clubs permitted in Dallas and in Houston. This particular use derives its income from the members of the club. It is not considered gambling under the Texas Penal Code. We brought the matter actually twice to the Planning and Zoning Commission a month before last, just to generally get their direction. At that time, they gave staff direction that they thought private card clubs should be treated the same as a bingo parlor. So we went back to the office and drafted a memo that actually modified the bingo parlor use where it's allowed by a special use permit and also the private card club. One of their concerns, Planning and Zoning Express, was that they didn't want either of those uses along the boulevard. So we added both those uses as prohibited uses within the Saginaw overlay district. The bingo parlor had already actually been designated as a prohibited use for any properties contiguous to the right-of-way of Saginaw Boulevard. So the use table, you can see in the council memo, bingo hall would be allowed in community commercial and light industrial by specific use permit. And then in private card club, community commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial by specific use permit. And that was, again, based on the direction that we received from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll just tell you, previously bingo halls currently under the use table is allowed with a specific use permit under light industrial only. So this is allowing a broader use or allowance in other districts, but again, with a specific use permit. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Counsel, questions? I have a couple of questions. So, one, this would come up as an SUP. If approved, any specific request would come to us as an SUP, correct?
Yes, sir.
And for Mr. Attorney, is there anything state law about bingo halls and private card clubs? What rights do they have in the city?
So there aren't any particular rights or entitlements. What distinguishes lawful-type games of chance from unlawful gambling establishments is essentially whether the establishment itself, the house, receives a portion or percentage of the proceeds or the winnings. So long as, and this is the narrow decision with respect to the private card clubs, these businesses have discovered that if they rent the table and they charge a monthly membership fee, but they do not take a portion of the pot, they're essentially able to narrowly skirt the gambling restrictions and can operate. But that doesn't mean that they have any specific constitutional entitlement to operate within the city, any more than any other business.
So the way they would operate, just to make sure I'm clear, if I sit down at the table and I'm gambling, if I'm playing poker with some buddies, somebody wins the pot and wins the money, but the house doesn't get a cut?
That's correct.
So it's just us among friends, we exchange money, basically?
That's right. And that's permissible, so long as the house does not receive a share of the proceeds.
I see. Okay. Excellent. Counsel, other questions? Yes, Cindy?
Are there going to be any food and beverages served at this venue?
That question was asked before. I assume that that would be permissible, depending on the use.
Any other counsel other questions? I do have a card for speaking. Ms. Kelly Stewart, do you like to speak?
I think I answered.
Okay. Thank you. If no other questions from counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a second? Mr. Beasley, thank you, sir. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We need to open a public hearing.
For number five?
Yes.
Oh, my apologies. I skirted that. Bryn, you're supposed to keep me out of jail.
You referred to your cards and then indicated that you had one speaker, so I think I assumed implicitly that...
I didn't do it right. How can I walk this back since we've already voted? What's the best way to do it?
I think you can still open and close the public hearing, and then if there are any comments, you can certainly reconsider.
At 6:09, I open a public hearing. Any comments? Essentially, anybody can walk up to the podium. That's what a public hearing means. You don't have to have a card. You can walk up, anybody. So we're doing this backwards, but anyone have any other comments, questions? I hope we've answered all your questions. All right. Then at 6:09, I close the public hearing. Now we'll move to number six. Item number six, consideration action regarding approval of a replat for lots 2R4A, 2R4B, 2R4C, 2R4D, Block A, Vennant Place, being a replat of et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You recall your last meeting, you approved a developer agreement that would escrow funds upon application for a building permit for these four lots. This is the final piece of the puzzle, clearly is the final replat of that property. It's a used storage facility that you're familiar with, having had an SUP a year ago or so. So this is the final step. Staff recommends approval.
Counsel, questions? Any questions, any concerns? I don't think I have a card for this and from the audience. No audience issues questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion? Wait a sec. Is this presented?
Okay.
It's a replat.
Charles, second. So Valerie, Mayor pro tem. Mr. Tucker, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, consideration action regarding a variance to Section 7.09, subsection C31 of subdivision ordinance to detention requirements for proposed parking lot at Southwest corner of Palomino Drive and South Saginaw Boulevard. My understanding that Mr. Beasley needs to excuse himself and abstain from this? Thank you, sir. We will come get you. We won't forget about that. All right, for this item, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you again, Mayor. This particular project, as you'll recall, is being developed just south of Palomino. The developers of Vicaro, Palomino Partners Limited Partnership, they are developing or in the process of preparing plans for Planet Fitness that will be located at the north end of that property. City code requires detention and no increase in downstream discharge as a result of development. As they were going through their calculations, they determined that they weren't able to get the volume of detention within the parking lot, which is really their only alternative in this particular case, without having some depths that would exceed the six inches allowed by the subdivision ordinance. So there are about 15 lots that are inundated in depths from six to 10 inches that would exceed our ordinance requirement. In addition to that, there are 63 spaces that are inundated by their detention design. The ordinance does not allow those to be counted toward their parking space requirement, which would be a severe hardship on that particular development. So they have requested a variance to those requirements. There's a variance letter and exhibit attached. Kelly Agnor with Vicaro is here tonight to be able to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, when the Planning and Zoning Commission consider their request, the ordinance has some specific considerations that they need to weigh in their deliberation. And that is listed in your memo also. Basically, their deliberation, they concluded that, excuse me, the impacts of granting the variance would be contained within the site, so there would be no impact really to the adjacent properties, other than a benefit because of the reduction or limitation on increases in downstream discharges. Periods of inundation would be temporary and infrequent. We designed to 100-year events, a rare storm, a rare event. And finally, well, I've already said that there would be zero property impact downstream. The commission voted unanimously to approve the variance, and staff recommends approval also, unless you have questions of Ms. Agnor.
First, counsel, any questions for staff, for Rick? Cindy?
I know that we're, TechDOT is supposed to be coming in and doing some rework on Saginaw Boulevard. Is that correct?
It is correct.
The last time they did that, we had a problem with the fire department flooding.
The work that TechDOT is doing, which is basically a surface mill overlay, and it will have no impact, positive or negative, on the fire station. The fire station's issue is because the drainage within 287, the state system, is inadequate, you know, per city standard, probably per current state standards. So this won't impact that negatively or positively.
Well, I was wondering...
Or the state's work that's pending.
You don't think it will impact this parking that you're talking about, the detention?
No. No, I don't.
Okay.
No, that would be totally within the right-of-way of 287. This parking lot is, what, 150, 200 feet from the right-of-way to the nearest edge to the highway? So it's quite a bit... The map shows the depiction of the detention area, if you have that...
Yeah, but water runs downhill, so...
You can see the old Pizza Inn, or Pizza, whatever it is, and then the Planet Fitness is set back again 150 feet or so from the right-of-way of 287.
Charles?
Rick, will this have any impact at all on the houses behind it?
They have designed this outfall, the outfall for their parking lot and development to drain along their western property line. There is a proposed flume, a concrete channel, if you will, that will run to the rear of their property, that will discharge onto Palomino. In addition to that, they've also, adjacent to that flume, on the residential side, have also designed and will have installed a channel, earthen channel swell, if you will, to carry runoff from the residential backyards. And that has capacity to keep that within the Vicaro property. So it would have no impact on... The property to the west, the residential property, is draining back to these, so it's not going to back up and stack up on those properties.
You said, though, that you were going to channel the water towards Palomino. Now is that going to create an issue there?
No. No, it's very... Without getting into a great deal of detail, but the discharges have been limited from what they probably are today. So that's the whole idea for the detention requirement, is to limit those discharges to something that doesn't cause a downstream impact.
Well, we're also looking at new construction on the south end of that same strip center.
I'm not aware of any additional development in that footprint.
Where the car wash was?
Excuse me?
Where the car wash was?
That's outside Valero's footprint, so there was likely to be development. And probably will have a similar scenario with that development when that occurs.
But that's in the same strip center, right?
It's in the same strip center, but they don't own 100% of the frontage along Saginaw Boulevard in front of the strip center.
Well, I'm just worried about...
So there's some out parcels, including the car wash.
Drainage issues.
Yeah.
You know, because of all the work that's being done, the construction and the new buildings and things.
I think, again, the car wash was a concrete surface, and now it's been razed, of course, and whatever development comes in there, development's going to be a very tough scenario for them because the footprint is so small. At least Vicaro had the opportunity, based on the size of their parking lot, to provide detention. The best solution, really, for any development that might occur along the frontage, close to the frontage of the boulevard, would be to make sure that those slabs are sufficiently elevated, unlike the fire station, which sits low relative to the state right-of-way and why it's susceptible to flooding. So any new foundations, new buildings, we would want to have those elevated to make sure that they don't flood.
And I guess it's that elevation that I'm worried about that's going to cause water to run around and maybe back up or into areas.
It would have to have positive drainage to get back to, you know, wherever it was discharging to before. So, yes.
Because I see topography lines on this map, but I don't see any elevation, so I don't know which direction...
Everything's generally draining to the east from that property. And that also, all the way over to the residences to the west there, they all drain east also.
Okay.
All right, I do have a card. Let's hear from Mr. Kelly Agnor. Ms. Kelly Agnor, I'm sorry. Couldn't read your...
That's okay. Kelly Agnor, I work for Vicaro Ventures, a developer. I'm at 2900 Wingate Street, Suite 200, Fort Worth, Texas, 76107. I'm just here in case you guys have any direct questions for me in regards to this and any of the additional lots that we own there, and if y'all have any questions.
Here are counsel questions. Now's your chance.
So just, I want to be clear, though, about the grades and how the inundation area is operating, how it flows. So, Rick, it looks like the majority of the water that is in the inundation area is moving back to the west to the flume, and there is a small opening that retains the water about two-thirds the way through that flume to create the inundation.
It's actually closer to Palomino, but yes, there is a weir structure.
So that weir, my only concern about a weir structure is that, say trash dams up the weir structure, who is going to maintain that trash and that flume to make sure that that weir does actually act as a weir and not a dam?
It's the responsibility of the property owner.
Because the top of curb elevation there is 72188. That means that the elevation of water would be 72188. And the adjacent property finished floor elevations for the houses are between 72210, 7224, 7223. That's getting to within about eight inches of finished floor elevation of adjacent property owners.
The water that's draining through the flume, there's, again, a concrete flume. There's a concrete wall along the, or will be, along the west property line of Vicaro property. And so that wall will have some freeboard to keep water from overtopping and encroaching onto the properties to the west.
Okay. So instead of a curve, I guess I can't, I really can't see the elevation of what that proposed wall would be. I'm assuming that the top of that wall, then, is significantly higher than the finished floor elevations of the property owner's finished floors of their houses.
I don't know that it'll be higher than the elevations of the floors, but it'll be one foot above the water surface elevation in the flume. So you'll have freeboard, which is a factor of safety. And it's a typical factor of safety for most channels in the metroplex.
And I'm assuming that that elevation continues from the point of the weir to some point of the inundation area, or does it continue through the entire property, that same elevation?
Just to the, I really couldn't tell you. Maybe Kelly remembers how far south that goes, but certainly from the point, from the detention area, the area of inundation from that point to the discharge, yes.
Now, my only concern is that since we are putting a weir structure in the middle of a flume, that parking lot is going to have a tendency to gather debris and trash and things of that nature. And weirs that are placed in a flume condition have a, just a terrible reputation of becoming a dam and not really operating as a weir any longer. So as long as I know that there is consideration on the elevation of the concrete wall along the entire west side of the property, that would act as, I would rather, and don't take this wrong way, I would rather your building flood before these six houses flood.
No, I understand.
Because you're the one bringing the development to these folks that have lived here a long time. And since your finished floor is 72275, that's about seven inches higher than anybody else's finished floor adjacent to you.
Understood.
As long as I know that that wall is higher than your finished floor elevation, I'm golden. I feel good about it.
Counsel, remember, we actually discussed it briefly before the meeting, and we'll make sure that that wall's at an appropriate height.
Okay.
Just to double check.
Other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions for anyone else? I don't have any other cards to speak on this. Yes, Bryn?
I'm just going to add some context as well. You'll note in the staff report, there are four findings that the council's required to find. I'm not suggesting that you have to read them out verbatim. Just simply, the motion should include the finding that the conditions set forth in 111E, 1 through 4, exist, and that will need to be noted in the minutes.
Which were the conclusions that were at the end of the council memo that were response to those four? I want to also add, because I neglected to mention it, the Planning and Zoning Commission did make an additional requirement that the 15 spaces that are inundated greater than six inches but less than 10 would have truck parking only and be designated that way. The ordinance allows up to nine inches of inundation for areas that are truck parking, so just an additional, I guess, caution there. But that should be a part of the motion also, that that be the requirement.
So it sounded like a complicated motion. So it sounds like, when I read it, I thought we can just affirm the conclusion from the P and Z, because they really answered those questions in those four conclusions they brought forth. Would that be sufficient?
And you can find that those conditions exist and concur with P and Z.
That was my thought when I read this, so... Any other questions, counsel?
Yes, sir.
If not, I will entertain a very elaborate motion.
So I move that we approve the variance as presented, considering that the conclusions read as follows. Impacts of granting, the variance would be continued within the site. Number two, no surrounding properties would be detrimentally impacted by granting the variance. Number three, the period of inundation would be temporary and infrequent. Number four, the detention would have zero impact on property downstream of the development as required by the city code.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a second?
Plus the... You're supposed to... Truck parking.
Plus that the 15 spaces that are designated between six and 10 inches of depth be designated for truck parking only.
I'm sorry, but does that have to be read out? It's not one of the conditions.
It's not one of the conditions that were stipulated to prove up...
You just wanted that added in as a last-minute item?
It was the Planning and Zoning requested that that be an additional requirement to the approval.
So you can, that's right. So...
I will amend that motion to add the 15 spaces be designated for truck parking only, considering the depth of water collecting in the inundation area.
Sounds good. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thanks for that. Let me get Mr. Beasley.
Charles?
parking on Saginaw Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item number eight, consideration action regarding approval of ordinance 2020-15 authorizing the use, issuance, and sale of City of Saginaw, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation series 2020. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have Martin McClain here with Sam Coe to review the bids for the certificates of obligation sale.
Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
You always bring us good news.
Well, I'm going to keep that record going.
Thank you, sir.
At your direction, a few months ago, you authorized us to begin the notice of detention to issue $20.5 million of certificates of obligation. Today was the day we were going to price that and bring it back to you for your final consideration. The rates that we discussed two months ago was 6.3, I'm sorry, 2.3%. We ended up today at 2.13%. Hilltop Securities, which is the former First Southwest company, some of you all may be aware of, was the purchaser of the bonds. They worked with Frost Bank. They did a great job. The results of the lower interest rate, and you may remember, our goal not only was to get you the $20.5 million, but was to keep our INS tax rate the same. Well, in order to do that, we were planning on drawing down about $700,000 of your INS fund balance. The column on the second from the right is what we're going to end up using from your INS fund balance, and it's only $258,000. We think this is really smart because we don't know what's going to happen in the next couple of years. So we're leaving a lot of the powder dry to protect you and your taxpayers. So the far right-hand column, you can see what the INS tax rate result is. Stays at our level. You can see it a little bit highlighted, 1773. That's our current INS tax rate. It remains there, and then it starts dropping after about four or five years. If we get growth faster, we'll use less INS fund balance, and we'll see the INS tax rate decrease, allowing you some of your future projects. If taxable values don't... If taxable values don't increase or even decrease, we have the INS fund balance that we were planning on using available to protect the taxpayers. So all in all, we thought the results were really good. We made some adjustments at the very end today with Kim, and I think it really came out with a better product than what we even showed you two months ago. Your staff did a great job with the rating agencies. Our rating was affirmed. Gabe and Kim and Dolph all participated in that. This is a time when the cities across the country are on credit watch because of COVID, the uncertainty. Now, we're financially better than we've ever been, and our sales tax is not getting hit like a lot of other places. Those were all affirmed, but there's just no talk of upgrades in today's environment. But your staff did a great job sharing the strengths and then showing what we've done over the last couple of years, but also what we've done the last couple of months. So it was all in all, a really successful day in the market, successful result, and then the tweaking that Kim did at the very end, I think it was even making it a better product because of the uncertainty we have of the next six months, year, or 18 months. So our recommendation is to award the bonds to Hilltop. Now, I would like to introduce Clark, Kim Bull. He's your bond counsel with McCall, Parker, and Horton. You all have a draft of the bond indenture, the bond ordinance. That's been finalized, but if there's any questions about that, about the bond ordinance, he'll be able to address the actual questions or the actual body of that legal document. But the results, we're real pleased with it. As I said, with Kim's and the staff's tweaking, I think we have a better product today than we were showing you two months ago.
Counsel questions?
Excellent work. Great forecasting. Appreciate this a lot.
Remind me what our bond rating is?
Double A, double A flat or double A minus? I think it's double A flat.
Yes, double A flat, okay. That sounds good.
I have it in my file.
No, that's okay. That's what I saw as well, but I wanted to agree with you. Counsel, do we have questions for Mark or the other folks here? Any other counsel? This is good news, and I do appreciate Kim's hard work on this. I know this is not an easy task that we put before.
In addition to the change in the law with SB 2, the difficult budgeting when we don't know, it was a lot on Kim's and Gabe's and Dolph's table to add bonds, but this is the time we have to do it because we have to wait till the taxable values are in. You all setting your tax rate. It's a lot that lands on them at a difficult time, and they really did a great job.
Very well done. Counsel, any questions? Anything else from Mark? If no more questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 202015 authorizing the issuance and sale of these tax notes, I'm sorry, certificates of obligation.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you all very much. A few signatures tonight, don't we? Tonight?
Got it.
All set up? Okay. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
All right, item number nine. Consideration action regarding resolution 2020-18, approval of sale of property described as Lot 25, Block 19, Rancho North Edition, also known as 232 Hialeah Park. For that, Dolph Johnson, the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this particular property has been a problem for us for many, many years. 232 Hialeah was the subject of a judgment in favor of all the taxing entities and the federal government for back taxes. There was a tax sale, and the city was struck off to the property, the property, excuse me, was struck off to the city in 2007. We have been since then maintaining the property. We'd demolished the structures on the property, been mowing it every year. In 2008, we tried to sell the property outright. We received no bids, reason being the amounts owed on the lot are way more than the lot is worth. And so we've had a few private offers since then, but when they find out that the amount's owed and the fact that they can't get a title policy because the federal government won't release the lien, even though the other taxing entities will, the interest quickly fades. So we were approached, going on, well, it's over a year and a half now, by a gentleman who has some interest in the lot, would like to build a home on it and sell it. So we've been working with our tax attorney and city attorneys and came up with a process where we could offer a tax resale deed, which is basically no title policy, no guarantees, no warranty of any kind. And so we have taken this to the other taxing entities, the county and the school district. School district, of course, is owed way more money than we are, but they've agreed to this process. And so the gentleman's offered $15,500 for the lot, which we, our pro-rata share would be about $3,300. But what this does is it allows us to get this lot, this property, back on the tax rolls. It gets a brand-new house built in this subdivision, and it stops our annual maintenance costs of mowing and administrative, just the mowing costs are over $1,000 a year that we spend on that now. That doesn't include the administrative costs. So I spoke to the gentleman today, and he assured me that once we closed on this deal, he's ready to immediately go to the building department, start pulling permits and getting started. So we recommend that council approve resolution 2020-18.
Counsel, questions for Dolph? Man, let's get this thing off the tax rolls. Hold, let's get this thing off our back. 2008, it's been that long? I'm shocked.
Yeah, well, 2007 is when it was struck off to the city.
Okay. So yeah, let's, I wish this gentleman luck, and I hope he can pull this off, but I want to throw the risk on him and off the city.
This could be my crowning achievement of my career, getting rid of this property.
I hope that's one of many, Dolph. I hope you have others that are at least as high. All right, counsel, any questions for Dolph? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. Good luck, Dolph. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item number, what, 10, right? Item number 10. Consideration action regarding proposed fiscal year 2020, that's 2021, tax rate and notice of public hearing. For that, Kim Quinn, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We discussed at the workshop this weekend that the new requirement of Senate Bill 2 is that we need to take a record vote on the proposed tax rate, and that will be advertised in the newspaper as well as the website. So this is to determine which rate you would like to advertise as the proposed tax rate. When we ended Saturday, we were, the majority of council was in favor of the .463280. We've also come up with a plan, if it's the council's desire to approve the lower tax rate of .461579.
No, sorry. I appreciate staff moving on this, and we've thrown a lot into it in the last few days. I appreciate the flexibility and the maneuverability of staff to get many options in front of us. As we discussed on Saturday, these are both, all these rates do end up with good things for the city and very good direction. So as I mentioned, I'm happy with multiple of these rates, or a few things I wanted to do, and we talked about them on Saturday. So, council, excuse me, I would propose we move forward with the 461, considering that we can do the raise to the employees as we discussed, which I think is very important, and the other pieces as well, while maintaining a relatively low tax rate, consistent with our plan, but also one that we can be proud of and move forward with. So what does the rest of the council think?
I'm in favor of keeping it at the amount we discussed. I'm sorry, my voice. The 263280. I'm in favor of keeping the tax rate that we discussed Saturday at 463280. My reasoning is, I don't like the idea, we did this last year, and I didn't like it last year. I don't like the idea of us going in and changing projections of revenue, et cetera, simply to arrive at a magical number that we have in our heads that is a part of a financial plan that is just a plan and is subject to change. And the title of this tenure plan is Setting Fair and Reasonable Parameters (goals) for Future Budgets. And I think a lot of care was taken in presenting the line items that hundreds of line items in this booklet, and they were arrived at with great thought and based on historical information and trends and financial data that we have received recently. So I think we made our feelings known on Saturday, and I think we should stick with the Saturday, 463280.
I agree that we should stick with what we have, but we still have the opportunity to go down when we make the final decision. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Your vote, you can always go down from what we advertised, but if you were to go up, we would have to start the whole process over.
I say we stay where we are, and we'll just look at it down the road and change it at that point in time if we need to.
Mr. Tucker?
I agree with Cindy.
Turn your mic on.
I agree with Cindy. I think we need to do it that way.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I agree with the.
Mr. Farr?
Well, I'd say that, I understand that a plan is just a plan, but I want to make it clear to everyone on council and to everyone who is a taxpayer in the community is that staff has come to us with a lower rate. They have recommended a lower rate. They have said that we know that we're going to increase a tax rate in the middle of a global pandemic and a recession. So what we're recommending as staff is that we lower the rate. And that lower rate generated a revenue that staff felt like they could live with. What they did say is if we had a little bit more money, then we can provide 3% raises across the board if we went to a rate that was higher than our plan. Now, what staff has come back and said is that we can still make those adjustments. We have to tweak a few things and still come back to our plan rate. Now, the commitment I've made to staff, the commitment I've made to everyone who has worked hard to put that plan together, is that I would support a tax rate increase or a tax rate decrease, didn't matter so long as we stuck to that plan, and we worked hard on that plan, all of us did. And what we're telling the community today is that, you know, even though staff recommends we're going to lower the tax rate, instead, no, I think we should raise the tax rate. We should go ahead and raise it higher than what it is today, and not only should we raise it at the level of our plan, but we should raise it higher than the level of our plan. I think that's communicating some pretty serious things to our taxpayers in the community when we say, not only are we not going to reduce the tax rate, we're going to increase it, and it's going to generate revenue higher than our plan, and staff is telling us that they can live with either the lower tax rate or even the plan rate. But raising it over the plan rate, I just, I still, there's no way I can support that.
Mr. Beasley?
I have since kind of had a change of heart, and I'm on board with Patrick and not raising and sticking with the plan rate.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You know, as I mentioned, I'm happy with, all these rates look pretty good to me for what we can do. My biggest thing was to give the raise to the staff because I think they need it, and also I think we're in line with our need to make the city better and also make a, we're having trouble filling vacancies in our staff, so I think that 3% is very important. We're going to have a lot of retirements in the next five, six years. We'll have a lot of folks we need to replace, and I think getting the folks, the staff an increase will help make our position a little more favorable for the marketplace. And I'm thrilled that we could do that with a lower tax rate with a 461, as Gabe and Kim put together over the weekend. So I'm very happy with 461. But let's be clear, the difference between 461 and 463 is about $39,000 in revenue on a 6.9, I got to read that, 6.9 million in M and O, 6.2 million, sorry. So it's very, very small. It's a tiny increase on a huge budget. So we're really not talking about much. As far as raising or lowering taxes, it's, most folks' taxes will be very similar. It'll depend more on their house value than on whatever rate we put out there. We're talking at a less than half a cent. So it's very small either way. The citizens, it just depends on what their home has been valued at as to what their taxes will be. It won't be much of a change on the city perspective. To put it in perspective, you know, our tax rate's roughly 46 cents. You go to Fort Worth, go across the street, and you add 30 cents to that. So it's a huge difference in taxes. So I think we still have a very attractive tax rate, attractive to businesses, to folks in the community, to residents as well, so. And I think it's a testament to the planning of the city that we're able to do many things we've talked about tonight with the bonds as well, to keep the bond rate the same, yet add many new projects, needed projects to the citizens. So I think we've got some good things going forward. I'm very optimistic. I thought going into this bond, this tax and budget season would be much more painful because of the recession, because of sales tax. We've been fortunate so far. That doesn't mean that's going to stay that way forever. We know, we don't know what's going to happen in the next six months, a year. Sales tax could change, property values could change, lots of things could change, just depending on how the economy as a whole goes. So keep that in mind as well. So things we may need to be flexible at the mid-year and even next year's budget, so keep that in mind. So yeah, so I'm happy with 461 since we can do, since it allows us to do everything that we want to do. Any other questions, council? Any other questions for staff? Any other details you need? Oh. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Okay, so if we did the 463, that would give us another part-time employee, would it not be? Could it give us a part-time employee?
Yeah, I mean, the difference, the mayor mentioned, rough numbers, about $37,000 in the general fund, so.
Well, that could, that doesn't matter. I want a part-time, not teeter.
As long as we meet plan, I am totally on board with raising the tax rate as long as we're meeting plan. If we were under, it's just, I understand the need for us to possibly look at this additional employee, but at the same time, people are losing their jobs, they stand the threat of losing their houses, and if we don't have to raise the rate, we shouldn't. And if we're, if we are sticking to plan by raising the rate, I made the commitment to staff regardless, is that I would stick to whatever tax rate would generate the plan rate. Otherwise, I would be saying, let's stick with staff's original recommendation and reducing the rate rather than increasing the rate. So I have an obligation that I have made and a commitment that I made to staff through all their hard work and putting that plan together to say, okay, I'm going to knuckle down and live with a tax rate increase at this time. But I just, even if we have to live without the employee, my position is, I just can't see myself raising the tax rate to generate revenue higher than our plan rate. I just, I can't see it.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Tucker? Yes, sir.
Gabe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the difference between the 461 and the 463 is only about four bucks a year per household?
Yeah, so on our average value home, it works out to like 3.20 a year, so it's a small amount.
So we're talking $3.20 a year?
Right, between the two tax rates, yep.
And I just, for that $3.20, and we can add a body back to the payroll here? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would just like to make the point that, going along with what Charlie said, taxes are a very volatile subject, and when citizens hear increase, they come unglued. But I, and. But I, and I think it's really unfair to advertise this as some horrible fate that will befall our residents, and along with what Charlie said, if everybody understood we're talking about probably 50, 60 cents a month, you know, this is not worth quibbling over, and we have already made our feelings known on Saturday.
If I had figured this out correctly, it's 27 cents a month?
So why are you having the 27?
No, I, so I'll put it to you, I'll just put my feelings back out on the table. We are in a position as a body to take money from people, and we get to make the decision, we take money from them or we don't take money from them. If it's a penny, we're taking money. And I'll tell you that, someone tell me, what is our current employee vacancy rate right now? How many spots do we need to fill that we don't have filled today?
We've got probably 10 vacancies right now, so let's say.
Out of 140?
Eight percent of the staff right now. I mean, probably double that within the next six months based on anticipated retirements.
So my question is, is why are we looking for money to pay for an employee when we're already 10 to 15 employees short for the year? I don't understand that. If we don't have to take the money, why are we taking the money? We don't have to do it. There will come circumstances, believe me, in the next 10 years, there will come circumstances where we will have to take the money. We don't have to take it today. It's a convenience in my mind. And if we're doing, if we're exercising a convenience just to say it's only four bucks, we're still taking people's money, and we're exceeding our plan.
Patrick, I want to say that, you know, we're not saying this is what we're going to vote on for the final tax rate. We're just saying we're adding this padding here. I was gone all weekend. I was at my mom's. Her internet service is very, very poor, so I wasn't even able to see anything on my iPad. And I got back this morning, and I saw the message that said that we can do the 461 as easily as we can the 463. This left me with a lot of questions because the message is quite vague. So I want to know what, what are the differences that are we looking at between Saturday and today when I got this message? And that doesn't have to be answered right now. I'm willing to come down to 461, but I want to talk about it a little bit more.
It's advertising?
We're just, yeah, that's right, it's just advertising.
Can we have Kim or Gabe clarify some of that or answer some of those questions?
It's pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. We would make some adjustments to the revenue estimates, so, you know, it's always good to be cautious and prudent and conservative in revenue forecasting. Sales tax, more than likely, we will, at the current trends, exceed what we're anticipating, so that would probably be the correction.
I would say half, so about $40,000 round numbers. Half of that is made up with transfers to the general fund. So if salaries increase, remember I told you that enterprise fund pays a portion of general fund, and it's based on salaries. The drainage fund pays for two drainage people, and so half of that difference is made up. The increase in the general fund is going to be offset by those transfers from the other funds, and about $20,000, we would adjust sales tax up.
All very reasonable, especially when we're seeing 11% over projection on sales tax right now. There is no reason in the world we couldn't make a small adjustment to stick to plan, in my mind. I just don't, I can't even see it.
But isn't this just advertising? We're not voting on that at this second.
Well, yes, it's for advertising, and.
So she said it was for being.
But why, why would we advertise the higher rate? Why aren't we just communicating to the taxpayers right now that we're willing to stick to plan and not ask for more money than we need? We don't need it.
What's our, Kim, what's our schedule? What is our schedule? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
The next motion that you will take will be the hearing, public hearing on the budget and the tax rate, the second meeting in September, which I believe is the 18th, maybe? And so that will be your next action taken. Depending on what you vote on tonight, and the vote will be included as part of the advertisement, excuse me, that will be advertised in the paper and on the website, per Senate Bill Two. These are the new requirements.
So since we're above the no new revenue tax rate of 457, we have to advertise? Is that correct? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. If we're 457, we would not have to?
You would still have to advertise, it's just the advertisement looks a little bit different.
Okay, I got you. So we have to advertise regardless, so. So you need this to go forward with advertising, to move us forward, to do the vote?
Yes, we need to have.
That's how it flows.
An advertise in the paper in the next week or so.
Okay. So bottom line, we have to take action tonight. We have to take action on this to get, help Kim and get Kim moving. Yes, Mary?
I just wanted to make a point about a phrase that's being used. It was used last year, and I didn't think it was appropriate last year. We are not taking money from our residents. We are providing them with necessary and desired services, so they are getting a benefit from this money. We are not taking it from them.
Can we still do the 3% raises at the 461?
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to express my thanks. On behalf of staff, the raises were considered, especially in this environment. Mark touched on it, we're very lucky, in a sense, to be minimally impacted by COVID. Credit to this council and previous councils and previous city management in being cautious. You know, not to belabor a point, but you're all aware of the retirements and the vacancies, and any amount we have to make us competitive in the marketplace is good, so very, very appreciative of council's consideration.
Mary, do you have another question? Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions, council? I think we beat this horse pretty hard.
Oh, golly.
I apologize to the horse lovers out there. All right, so, any other questions, any other things from staff we need to add? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the tax rate at 461579.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those posed? Okay, motion fails. Do I hear another motion?
And it's strictly speaking, it's to propose.
Yes, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, strictly speaking, it's to propose the tax rate that you state, not to approve the tax rate, just semantics, but.
Propose, okay. Do I have another motion?
May I make a motion that we agree with that 463, the proposed tax rate?
Okay, do I have a second? Cindy, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those posed? All right, so 463 is what we'll advertise. Do you have direction, Kim? Okay, is that all you needed? That's our proposed tax rate to date. Okay, back to the agenda, that was 10. So 11, at 6:58, we are adjourned to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, subsequent to returning. We will return to adjourn.